Okay, call the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission order. Would you stand where we please? I'll have the prayer. Richie will have the pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you again for this day and thank you for blessings you've given us. And Heavenly Father, we thank you for the America we live in and the elections we just had and the... We're in a country where the transition of power is smooth and we thank you for that. And we pray that you'd just be with our new leaders and be with them, give them strength and wisdom to continue to run this county as strong as it has been. We thank you for all the men's blessings in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? Call roll, please ma'am.
Rhonda Allen. Richie Boland.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Gary Farley. Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught. Vincent Windrow. Craig Lynch.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Fairly. Okay, entertain a motion on the approval of our minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that they be approved as mailed.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All present, motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Items withdrawn or deferred.
We just have, really, just the one item, the next item on the agenda, the presentation by Mr. Ed Cole with the Transit Alliance of Middle Tennessee. He contacted us last week and asked if he could be heard on the September Day meeting as opposed to the meeting today, so.
Okay. Public hearing, amendments to Section 1304, accessory structures and uses, regulations regarding pools and other housekeeping amendments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We've, as staff, we've become aware in recent months that the regulations regarding pools are in possible need of amendment. Pools are considered detached accessory structures and count toward the total square footage allowed as identified in our chart under Section 13.04B, which actually, if you look in your agenda packets, we've attached a copy of that. Basically, if it's an acre or less, you're allowed 1,200 square feet of a detached accessory space. A little over an acre to five, you're allowed 1,800 square feet, and five acres or more, you're allowed 2,500 square feet. The Board of Zoning Appeals in recent months has considered a number of variance requests to the total square footage allowance, basically due to a... Someone wanting to put a pool on the property. After researching how other communities do it, we have seen it done both ways, but we have seen communities that don't count pools in the square footage requirements for detached accessory structures. After looking at our regulations, we feel that this is probably appropriate amendment and should hopefully cut down on some of the requests we have going to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So basically, what we've got in your agenda packets, again, is the Section 13.04. Basically, what we're proposing to do is just excluding the pools from the calculations for detached accessory structures. While we were looking at this, we also made a couple of other housekeeping amendments, namely dealing with fences. And if you see on B5, fences, walls, and hedges were subject to the provisions of Section 13.08. 13.08, we don't have that in here, but that's the section that deals with fence design guidelines. We just took out the walls and the hedges for that. Under number nine, it says signs, except advertising signs are subject to Article 20. Even advertising signs are subject to that, so we just took that out anyway. That was more of a housekeeping. And then, under D, bulk location regulations, fences typically don't... Well, yeah, fences typically don't meet, have to meet the setbacks, so we clarified that a little bit. We also, and this is probably the biggest change, one of the requirements in our accessory structures regulations is that detached accessory structures or any accessory structure cannot be permitted or constructed before the principal structure is placed. We feel that fences really is something that should not be bound by that. A lot of people may put fences on their property before the house is constructed, you know, agricultural fences, anything like that. So we just felt that'd be inappropriate to take that out of there. So really, that's kind of what we have for the amendments here. We didn't think that this was gonna have a lot of public comment on this, so that's why we scheduled it for public hearing at this meeting. And we also have our... We've advertised it for the board commissioners at next month's meeting. So we've kind of put this on, I wouldn't say the fast track, but we just didn't think that this was a very controversial amendment and should go through fairly quickly. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, does anyone have questions on this before we open it up to a public hearing? Okay, we'll open it up to a public hearing. Does anyone like comment, any questions? Anyone? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring you back.
We just need a motion for recommendation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion approved, have a second.
Craig, could I just ask one question? Doug, is this consistent with, like, other counties and city of Murfreesboro with swimming pools?
More than... I don't think so much Murfreesboro, more Smyrna. Now, Murfreesboro, actually, the way they do their accessory structure, they do theirs a little differently than we do ours. Basically, what they do, they don't have a set amount of detached accessory space. Basically, they... Their regulation, as I recall, unless it's changed, is that they require that as long as you don't meet... As long as you don't exceed the 20% lot coverage on the property, then you're fine. We've actually... We've actually thought about changing ours to that. The biggest concern, for smaller lots, I don't have so much of a concern with that. It's for the larger tracts where if you have 100 acres and you've got 20% lot coverage, you're basically saying they can have 20 acres covered in a residential area. That's my biggest concern. But for smaller lots, I don't really foresee it being a problem. But I guess that's the long way to answer your question of... Smyrna does not regulate pool size as detached accessory structures. Murfreesboro just kind of lumps them all into the 20% lot coverage.
Pool structure having influence on field lines, those types of...
Yes. They'll still have to make sure that they abide by that. Yeah, you don't want to put the pool over the field line. They... I don't think a state would allow that.
Right, and that's all covered elsewhere.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Richie, have a question.
Yeah, one more question on NE, and you've touched on it just a little bit. It says, "No accessory structure shall be constructed or established on any lot prior to the time of the substantial collision of the principal structure." Should we define lot size there? In other words, I'm thinking, you know, somebody's got a 20-acre parcel and they want to put a 30-by-50 metal building on it before they build their house, you know, to store boats, RVs, oil heaters, whatever. Are we not?
Well, we actually, in a different section, I don't think it's this one. Let me just double check. Oh, actually, the next... It is in this section, excuse me. If you look under E3, Mr. Boland, it talks about a non-commercial storage facility or workshop or other structure for private use of a landowner, garage shed, can be constructed on residentially zoned property prior to the establishment with a type-two condition of use from the BZA.
Okay.
So, yeah, we already...
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Have a motion to approve, have a second. All present, motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Waiver request, Mr. Mark Cutlet, requesting two waivers, fire hydrant requirement, and easement width for property located at 10650 Independent Hill Road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property is located along the north side of Independent Hill Road to the east of Paw Paw Springs. The property totals about 55 acres in size with a proposed tract right at 5.01 acres. We have included a copy of the Platts, or survey, I guess, in your agenda materials. Information provided by the applicant indicates that they desire to sell the proposed 5.1-acre tract, which contains an existing house, and then keep the remaining 50 acres as a separate tract. They will be using the third... Sorry, this will be the third tract to use the access easement that's in existence at this point, which is permitted by the subdivision regulations. It does appear that the easement accessing the tract has been in existence for some time. While the existing 55-acre tract and the easement itself are grandfathered, the new 5.1-acre tract does have to meet the subdivision regulations, which is why you're seeing these waivers today. Since the tract already accesses an existing 25-foot easement, they are requesting a waiver to that provision which requires a 50-foot access easement. They're also requesting a waiver to the fire hydrant provision as the nearest fire hydrant is approximately 4,700 feet away from the property. Information provided by CUD indicates that the Independent Hill Road is served by a pump station that cannot support a hydrant. The Cutlips are here, as well as Ms. Wood from CUD, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, questions?
Taking out the current house, making it a five-acre lot, and just asking for a waiver from a property that already exists.
Basically, yeah, the house is already there and the tract, it's just, you know, as a whole, right now, it's all 55 acres, but they're actually creating a five-acre tract and then the existing, the remaining 50 acres would still be there.
Really, nothing's changing from...
No, just they're adding an extra lot, basically, but that's about it.
Now, we're gonna have three lots off of private easement, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if they go to take five more acres off the 50, then they're gonna be having another variance or...
Yeah, they'll have to ask for a waiver for the fourth one, and then also, that's when the subdivision regulation kicks in as far as making that easement county standard, county specification of the road.
Okay. Have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All present, motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Staff reports and other business... Amendment to bylaws, change the meeting time for the fourth Monday to 9:00 AM.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. At the April 26 meeting, the Planning Commission voted to move the meeting time of the fourth meeting from 1:00 PM to 9:00 AM for a three-month trial. At the end of the third month, which was the July Day meeting, the commission moved to permanently set that time to 9:00 AM. In order to put this into effect, the change to the bylaws of the Planning Commission is necessary. The amendment is shown below. Regular meetings of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission shall be had on the second Monday and then the fourth Monday of each month, and we changed the 1:00 PM to 9:00 AM. We also added a little bit of extra verbiage in there regarding when conflicts arise, including but not limited to holidays, inclement weather, those kind of things. Also, that last sentence in the paragraph there, "In the event there is no business to consider," the chairman does have the authority to cancel a regularly scheduled meeting. And that's consistent with what we've been doing. I mean, there's no sense in meeting, we have nothing to consider, but we thought since we're making the amendment, it'd be a good idea to go ahead and put that in there anyway. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
One quick question, though. I mean, the nine's okay with me and it seems like the rest of us that are here, but then we've got one, two, three, four, five that are not here. So is nine still a balancing act or, I mean...
I think it is because the five that are not here were adamant for this time.
We talked about this last...
Jeff was not.
Farley was against the time, but...
I mean, we can...
Mike was, the two Mikes.
If you want, we can...
Mike was not absent because of 9 o'clock. He'd have been absent at 1:00 also.
But we've been... Everybody's been here up until now school started, and I guess it's kind of put a monkey wrench in everybody's...
I mean, if the commission's more comfortable, we can bring this up at the next night meeting. I mean, this isn't anything that... I mean, if we moved it to the next night meeting, we'd still... We'd be fine. We still have plenty of time.
I don't know if anyone realized she's still on the planning commission. She was elected a county commissioner, and she may think she's in limbo right now because she hadn't been sworn in as a county commissioner.
Right.
And she may think that her time as a representative at large is up.
May also be on vacation, too.
And may also be on vacation.
We talked about this at the last...
We talked about it. I think we're okay. We got a motion, we got a second. All present, motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Minister Arco, 20th Zoning Resolution, Sign Regulations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The public hearing was held on the proposed revisions to the sign regulations on July 12, 2010, last month. Since that time, staff has been preparing answers to the comments made at the meeting. At the time these comments were prepared, we... Well, we were... We have done, when the agenda went out, we weren't quite finished with them yet, but we've since sent a memo out to you with all the responses to the... To those, of all the questions that we identified. I'm hoping we didn't miss anything in there, and if I did, I apologize, and we can talk about that today. I'm... I'll kind of leave it up to you as far as how you want to handle this, if you want me to go through all this, or if you just want to ask questions, or, I mean, I'll be more than happy to do this either way. I know there are some people here as well from the sign industry that we sent copies of, the ones that had questions, we sent copies to them as well. So however you want to go forward with this, I'm fine with.
Well, last month, we had a... If you kept your record here, there were several things that really started off about Section 20.03 right there, and a lot of marks down through there. If you want to just go down those, do you remember starting off with the flash and what was the most controversial? I guess that's one people may still want to speak on.
Okay.
Tell them how you changed them, and if they're okay, we can move on.
Sure, okay. The... Actually, the very first thing that I recall, it's not actually in the memo we did, but the very first thing that I recall there being described had to do with timeframes on abandoned signs and the definitions. I think, Mr. Jordan, I think you had brought that up as a concern about what is a definite... How long is it before it's considered abandoned?
You know, six months, two years, five years, when to cut off this.
We looked at some other... Well, I looked at some other resolutions. I saw 30 days as a general one, so I put that in here for ours, 30 days. I mean, just to give us a little definition, as we know, it's abandoned after 30 days. So, I mean, if we want to...
30 days is an answer, okay.
What do you call abandoned? I know sometimes if one tenant moves out, they may pull down the neon part or whatever of the sign, and while they're remodeling the building, it could take over 30 days before the sign is back operable.
Well, something like that, we would probably... If we know that they're working towards something and there's an intent to open up a business again, they're just working through the, you know, the remodeling process. I mean, we'll work with that. I mean, that, in my mind, you know, we're not going to sit there and, you know, tick, 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 30 days, sorry, the sign has to go.
Or somebody that has a building that's up and down, you know, in the rural areas, of course, that says it's leased, and it takes 60 days to get it leased again. You know, that sign is inoperable for that... I've got rental property, and sometimes stuff sits empty for 30 days, you know, it's not... And I don't know.
Well, yeah, if a sign's legally established and it just has like a sign on it saying "for lease," "property for lease, call, you know, your phone number," I mean, those kind of things, I don't think that falls under that category myself, so... But we can talk more about that as we go on. Just kind of... I'll just kind of run through my memo real quick, and I figure when we're done, we can have some more discussion on these. The first comment and question had to do with, again, the flashing, fluttering signs. Does this include digital signs? No, it does not. It wasn't our intent to do that. But what we did do, we did clarify that provision a little bit by basically stating that not including automatic changeable copy signs as regulated in this article, so that there's no confusion there. There was a sign... There was a regulation regarding... Or there was a concern regarding what were called snipe signs, which are basically, as defined in our proposed regulations, are off-premise signs that are tacked, nailed, posted, whatever, to trees, poles, stakes. Basically, those, like yard sale signs you may see in a neighborhood or in the right of way, something like that, is what's considered a snipe sign. I believe it was Anthony Johnson, Commissioner Johnson, had a concern that he thought it was too prohibitive that you'd be allowed to have yard sale signs, like if you wanted... If your neighbor down the street was having a yard sale and you're on a dead-end street and he just wanted to put a sign on your property temporarily. Basically, what we felt that that would fall under our temporary sign regulations, and that's how we would regulate that. So that's how we answered that particular question. The wind-blown or inflated sign, is this defined as flag signs? The answer to that question is no. Flags are proposed to be defined under a different definition and some different regulations. We did, however, clarify that particular item, wind-blown or inflated signs, not including flags as regulated in this article. There was a comment that they felt that those type signs should be allowed as temporary signage. I don't necessarily have a strong opinion one way or the other on that. Our biggest concern as staff is that those signs can look tacky, and they can be difficult to measure square footage-wise. But if you want to regulate those as temporary signs, we can certainly do that. We didn't propose any regulation change at this time, but I figured I'd ask for guidance from you on that. One of the... Probably one of the more discussed topics had to do with the time period for the automatic changeable copy signs. I'm on page three now of the memo, I guess I should have numbered these, sorry. Of course, our proposed regulation was flashing signs that change every five minutes, you know, that would be the minimum. There were several comments that they felt this was too long. We did review several ordinances when we started these amendments, and we did uncover a variety of message change times from as quick as eight to 10 seconds to upwards of 20 minutes. We even found one that you're allowed eight changes in a 24-hour period. So it kind of ran the gamut the whole way. Of course, we discussed it a little bit regarding the safety aspect on that. Some of the thoughts that we had, again, had to do with, you know, it's... First of all, we think it's easier to start with a higher number and then work your way down to a lower number as opposed to starting with something lower than realizing maybe it's a little too short and having to lengthen it somewhat. You know, five minutes was kind of a middle-of-the-road kind of approach. The sign seminar we had with Dr. Kelly a little earlier this year, he made some recommendations for time and temperature signs, could change every eight seconds, but every other message sign could be 30 seconds. I mean, that... There's... I think there's ability to compromise there, but again, we want some direction from you as far as how we handle that. Okay, signs displaying... Display areas with varying light illumination. It says, "Does this impact digital-type signs for service stations?" The answer to that question is yes. While staff is proposing to allow automatic changeable copy signs, the regulations are clear that these signs are not to include any animation, illumination, anything scrolling, anything like that that could cause distraction to traveling motorists. And we also include an item under Item Q under the prohibited signs that doesn't allow full-motion video screens, so that was the answer to that question. Moving on to Section 20.04, which is the allowed signs section. And Josh, I think I'll let you handle this particular one. This had to do with the non-commercial flags versus commercial flags, and I'll let you kind of make some responses to that, so...
Okay. There was a question posed at the last meeting, actually, the July 12 meeting, about regulating flags as signs and what the implications of that might be, and our office was asked to look into that, and we did. I sent you a memo dated July 20, 2010, addressing that question, and I assume you've had an opportunity to look at that. I cited several cases in that memorandum. But basically, the short answer is that you can regulate flags as signs, so they can come within the sign regulations if you choose to do that. Once you regulate flags as signs, the legal parameters of that are no different than any other sign. So that basically means that you can draw a distinction between commercial messages and non-commercial messages. The law allows that. The law says that you cannot favor commercial messages over non-commercial messages. So you cannot be more stringent on non-commercial messages than you are on commercial messaging, whether you're talking about flags or signs. Within the category, then, of non-commercial messages, flags in this instance, you cannot favor one message over another. So really, kind of getting to the guts of it, I think a lot of the discussion was about American flags and the ability to regulate those. You can regulate the number of flags that are put on a lot. What you cannot do is favor certain things over others. So for example, you cannot allow someone to have five commercial signs but only two non-commercial signs, whether flags or otherwise, because in that instance, you're favoring commercial messages over non-commercial messages, and you cannot do that. Then let's suppose you're allowed three non-commercial flags on a property. You cannot then, within that subcategory, prefer some messages over others. So you can't say you can have three non-commercial flags unless it's the American flag. If it's the American flag, you can have as many as you want, because that's preferring one non-commercial message over others. So that's the context within which you're operating. Now, that still leaves you a lot of flexibility. You could choose, for example, not to regulate flags as signs at all. You could just take them out of the sign ordinance. You could choose to allow as many non-commercial signs on a property as you want. That would be okay. But you can't then distinguish between those non-commercial messages. So if somebody's got 100 American flags, or 100 state flags, or 100 civic flags, they would all be permissible because they're all non-commercial messages, and you can't further define within that category. So that basically is your framework that you're operating within, and I think that addresses the questions that were raised at the last meeting. Unless you have questions.
What you're saying, Josh, is that we can't regulate flags as signs distinguishing between the American flag?
Right.
Even though we get up and pledge allegiance to the flag every meeting we have?
Cannot. You cannot give it deference as compared to other non-commercial messages. So if you want someone to be able to have, for example, unlimited number of American flags, if that's... And I think that was part of the discussion at one of the meetings, you would have to allow any number of any non-commercial flags. So if you wanted to have unlimited American flags, you'd have to allow unlimited Tennessee flags or unlimited civic flag. You can't distinguish between those non-commercial messages.
Who says we can't?
The U.S. Supreme Court. There's a... If you look at my July...
Those things we have to do, no?
My July 20 memo, there are several Supreme Court cases that deal with this issue, and that's where the authority lies. And I did, for what it's worth, because the issue came up multiple times during the conversation, I had two extended conversations with the legal staff with the city of Murfreesboro. I spoke to both David Ives and Susan McGannon about it because I understand there was... Maybe they've dealt with some of these issues in the past, and I'm confident that my memo to you is completely accurate.
So a couple of things I was thinking of that we, I think, brought questions because of this is like an arch-type flag or something that may say trucks, or a brand of trucks, or a brand of car, or Coca-Cola, or whatever. And then you've got... So we have to establish that the same way as we do as the American flag. It's treated the same?
No, no.
A name brand would be commercial.
You can make a distinction between commercial and non-commercial. So you could...
Okay, so a non-commercial on a business that says, "Thank you for your business," or "Have a great day," that's still non-commercial, but it's saying a message.
Well, that's... You're going to get into a potential issue there. I mean, in that you may have to draw distinctions at that point whether or not that is a non-commercial message. You know, an example would be if you had a restaurant that said, you know, "We love milk," and it's at an ice cream place. Is that a non-commercial message or a commercial message? You know, I don't know.
Yeah.
At that point, they could be promoting their product, you know, indirectly, or it could be non-commercial. But if you... So if you go down that route and you start regulating flags or other signage like that, the county may ultimately be called upon to try to distinguish between some of those messages, and that could be challenging using your examples.
Well, it's not a new advertisement tool. I mean, some flags are just plain, either different colors or whatever, just to catch attention because they're flapping in the wind or whatever.
Right.
And they may be arched or bowed or triangle or whatever. I'm not talking about a streamer or a pendant or something, I'm talking about a flag. So... And it's lined up down the street on their property strictly just to catch your attention, you know, to look this way, so to speak.
But if it...
That would be a non-commercial type deal.
I think so. If that fell within the definition of flag as it's defined, and it's a non-commercial message, and suppose the sign reg said you can have a maximum of three non-commercial signs, then they'd be permitted three of those, and that'd be the end of it.
Could you not distinguish between commercial applications or settings, the residential settings, where if somebody wanted to have 50 American flags or whatever flags in their front yard, that's okay, but in a commercial... On a commercially zoned business or something like that, they couldn't?
I don't think so.
I don't know if I want to tell the business owner they can't have a flag in their yard I don't know if I want to tell the business owner they can't have a flag in their yard, in their, in their front anyway, but I, but you can get ones that are all multi-color, like-
Right.
-trying to catch attention.
The wa- the way the law really looks at it is not so much the location as the content of the message contained on it. So, the law doesn't, I mean, these cases that you read don't distinguish between whether it's at a house or a business. They distinguish between what is the message being conveyed on the flag or the sign. And so, I don't know, I mean, I'd have to think through that. But my, my initial response is that trying to change the regulations based on residential versus commercial probably won't work. You've really got to make your distinguishing portions based upon the content of the message between commercial and non-commercial.
What you're saying is that if we wanted to regulate flags as signs, we couldn't distinguish between the American flag and any other commercial. Is that what, that's what you're saying?
Any other non-commercial. You can distinguish between non-commercial and commercial. So, we could say you can only have two commercial flags and ten non-commercial flags. You can be more lenient to non-commercial messaging. You cannot be more lenient to commercial messaging. So, we could not flip-flop that. We can't say you can have two non-commercial, but ten commercial.
Okay, let me back up.
Okay.
If we wanted to regulate flags, any flag, as a, a sign-
Right.
With the exception of the United States of America flag, you're saying we couldn't do that?
I do not believe under existing law you could do that.
What if we did?
Then you would, you know, you'd just be subjecting yourself to challenge.
Maybe it's time we did, Josh.
That's, that's a, that's up to you. I, I, I will, but tha- that's the answer to the question.
I, I understand.
And as you're, I mean, of course, and as a body, you can do and recommend what you want. Now, when I'm asked at the county commission, and if our attorney's asking me, I'm going to tell them that, you know, as your planning director, you know, I don't think that that's a wise choice. Okay? I mean, I, I understand you're going to do what you feel you have to do, and I understand that. But, I mean, just from what, talking with Josh, the research he's done, the research we've done as staff, as far as the sign laws are, are concerned, it's, it's pretty clear what we can and cannot do. Now, of course, if it's done, it's not a problem unless somebody challenges it. But at the same time, that does, in my opinion, would, as, as Josh stated, would, I think, would open up the, the door for a possible legal challenge.
We're not the first ones to be in this situation, because I've, what little I know about legal things, I've heard about lawsuits, about places where they want to fly other countries' flags on school grounds, and things like that. And there've been challenges, and, and they've all, the ones who were promoting the American flag have not won in court. You know, you're like, exactly what Josh says, you can't stipulate the one flag over the other.
Now, another way to possibly handle this, if we don't want to make a distinction between commercial and non-commercial messages, is simply just to say, as a property owner, you're allowed to have X amount of flags, period, and not even worry about what the message is. You know, it could be commercial, it could be non-commercial. We don't differentiate between them. We just say, "You can have X amount of flags. They can be X amount of square feet." And that's it.
What do our current rules say about flags?
They really don't talk a lot about flags.
Are we having problems with flags?
No, but the way we-
Are we bothering with this at all?
Well, the, the way our regulations are now, of course, you know, we, we added a provision in there several months back, you recall, because there was an issue that came up with a digital sign that we had no regulations for. So, we added a provision in there that basically said if our regulations don't address that type of sign, then they're not permitted. That allowed us a chance to kind of complete these amendments that we were already kind of researching anyway. What, my concern is if, if we don't at least make some kind of allowance for them, we're going to run into the same situation. People are going to try to, it, it's hard to, to regulate something that you have no regulations for. So, that's kind of why we've expanded the allowable flags to include, allowable signs, excuse me, to include flag signs. So, I mean, are we having a problem with them at this point? No. But any new signs under our current regulation that are flag signs, since our regulations don't really allow them, aren't permitted anyway. So-
The problem we're fixing creates some problems. An idea we're fixing creates some problems with the flags, by not messing with it at all. I'd, I'd be inclined just to not even mention flags, and just see how it goes, and address the situations if they come up at that point in time. Maybe that's a simplistic approach.
One, one thing, I, I think we need to distinguish the difference between a flag and a banner, too. You know? I think what, we need something in there that, you know, if you look down the, you know, a street right here, especially a car lot, you know, you have so, so much there. But I, I consider a lot of that more as banners than flags, you know? And, you know, we've, we did a pretty good job with the definition there, but I don't like the, "Or similar device." In other words, a fabric or other flexible material attached or designed to be flown from a flagpole or similar device. I wouldn't- If we had the "or similar device" out of there, that might help us somewhere down the road, too.
Use the antenna on every car for a little flag, or-
Yeah.
Sparkler, or something like that.
Right now, under nine, under flag containing commercial messages, flags containing commercial messages. You're allowed two per lot maximum, thirty-two square foot per flag, sixteen feet high, and no illumination. That's under the commercial messages. Flags containing commercial messages. Is that not correct?
Um, um, it's in a couple of different areas. Did you say two per lot maximum?
Two per lot maximum.
Okay, well, that, that's under the, for residential areas for those approved non-residential uses, like daycares or something like that. On page eleven, there's actually, for the commercial areas, which we allow three per lot. Height not to exceed twenty-four feet, sign area thirty-two square feet. So, it, there, there's a couple of different places where we deal with that.
Both of these are not mentioning American flags at all. That's, that's a commercial type.
Right. And actually, the next, and I mean, I'll just kind of address the next question on the, on the memo I sent out. There was a question, actually, it's two down. Uh, there was a question about if you fly the American flag, if it's a sign, am I being told I can only fly two flags on that lot, if it's a commercial lot? And the answer to that question is no. The regulations make provisions for flags containing either commercial or non-commercial messages. So, someone could be entitled to both. For example, a business owner could have up to five flags based on these regulations, which contain non-commercial messages, US flag, state flag, what have you, along with a specified number of flags containing commercial messages, which in this case would be three. So, they could have five non-commercial flags and three commercials. They could have up to eight. So, that was, I know that was a question that we had, that we had gotten as well.
My place of business, Doug, okay? Fictitious place of business. Been there thirty years. And I've been flying a US flag and a state flag for thirty years. We put in these ordinances would, would-
You could still do that.
They would now be regulated.
Right, but you could still, I mean, there's, there's a couple of ways to look at that. The answer to your question is, could you still fly, I mean, I guess your question is, could you still fly those today? If new regulations went into effect, then the answer would be yes, you could. For one, the flags that you've had for thirty years would be considered grandfathered, because they were already there.
Not the same flag.
Not the same.
They wear out about every year.
That, what's that now?
They're wear out about every year.
Oh, okay, you just put, you just-
Load a new one.
Well, I mean, you take one down, you put it back up. I mean, I, I don't think that counts as, you know, take, as removing it. I think you're okay. Uh, that would be, I still think that would be considered grandfathered. Uh, now, I mean, but to further answer your question, uh, you're still allowed, because you would allow, you'd be allowed to have five non-commercial flags. So, you can still have three, if you want to put three more up there. You know, you could still do that.
And how tall can a flagpole be?
Uh, depending on the zoning district you're in. Twenty-four feet in the commercial areas, and I think sixteen, I think is that what it said? Sixteen feet in residential areas. Now, those can be changed. You know, our maximum height, really countywide, as far as zoning concerns, thirty-five feet. So, I mean, that, those, those can be changed. So-
Mr. Hines and ourselves' flagpoles are thirty feet tall every day, you know, and I know there's been some issues in the city with people that have flagpoles.
And, and I just want to make, we're not trying to create problems.
Right.
I mean, we're really not. We're just, we see that this is something that might become an issue, because we don't really have any regulations for it right now. So, you know, we're trying to, to regulate that. But again, there, there are other way, the way we're proposing to do it here is not the only way to do it. You know, like I said, we could just say every lot's allowed to have fifteen, twenty, ten, you can pick a number of flags. We could just limit the, the size of the flag and the, the height, but we don't make a differentiation between whether it's a commercial message or a non-commercial. We just say it's a flag, you're allowed this many of them. We're not going to care one way or another what the message is. That's an option, too.
Josh, it may take a couple of times for it to sink in, but repeat that again, what the Supreme Court said. We can identify the commercial and put a limitation on that. The non-commercial, not necessarily-
No, wait. All right, start back at the top. First, first issue is can you regulate flags as signs? And the answer is yes. But that would also mean you could choose to take flags out of your sign regulations altogether, like Mr. Jordan was talking about, and just not regulate them at all. If you're going to regulate flags as signs, then you can permissibly distinguish between commercial messages and non-commercial messages. Within those two categories, you can be more lenient with non-commercial messaging than commercial messaging, but you can't flip-flop that. So, you can't, another way to say it is, you can't allow more non-commercial mess, or commercial messages than non-commercial messages.
Right, right.
Then, within the category of non-commercial messages, you can't distinguish between messages. So, that's where you get into, you can't just pick out the American flag and say, you can have an, you can only have two state flags, but you can't have unlimited number of American flags. You can't do that, because you're distinguishing between non-commercial messages at that point.
Gotcha.
Once you're in that category, you've got to treat them all the same.
Right.
So, that's basically the lay of the land. So, you could have two commercial flags and two hundred non-commercial flags. But it wouldn't matter what kind of non-commercial flag. They could be advertising anything non-commercial at that point.
Right, right.
And that'd be fair game.
What is a non-commercial flag that we're probably not thinking about? If we had two hundred. We're thinking about Tennessee. We're thinking about Alabama. We're thinking about American.
You can have a college football team. You could probably have a brand of motorcycle or something. That would, that'd be kind of-
Yeah, someone who, someone who likes-
That'd be a limbo, though. If somebody doesn't sell Harley-Davidson motorcycles, but likes them, is that flag commercial?
That's, in my opinion, that's a non-commercial flag. As you've just explained the situation, if, you know, like at my house, you know, I'm a big hockey fan. I decide I want to fly a Nashville Predator sign.
And you're not selling tickets or merchandise.
And I'm not selling tickets or merchandise, right.
So, that's non-commercial.
Yeah, I'd love to get a Harley motorcycle. If I could get one, I'd, if I got one, I'd probably fly a flag. If I sold them, yeah, that, that's a whole nother, that's a, that's kind of like-
Non-commercial. Give us, give us some-
One of the biggest non-commercial signs that you're going to run into that you've really overlooked i- is religious type, Baptist, Nazarene, whatever. Those are non-commercial. And you see those flown wherever. That's one of the biggest ones you're going to get into.
So, I mean, basically, anything that's not a commer, that's not advertising a commercial product for something that they manufacture or sell on site. I mean, really, generally speaking, you're going to be, that's commercial. Anything else is going to be non-commercial.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask David, can you shed us any light on anything that you've had in the past twenty years, or whatever, issues on those flags? Complaints or otherwise?
We have investigated some complaints about too many banners or too many flags. Most of them are attracting customers, as we said, the little non-commercial flags that just fly and flicker in the, in the air. Uh, that's been our biggest problem. Banners are a different situation to where we can, um, regulate them as temporary signs. But, uh, that's about all we've had, is, is just the attracting traffic to-
Like streamers and stuff?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Not necessarily what we're talking about right here, then?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, another possible way to regulate flags, and, and this is something that, that we've kind of talked a little bit about amongst staff, is, especially the non-commercial ones, is, I mean, if you want them to have the ability to have an unlimited number of non-commercial flags, on, where we have the proposed, let me see here. Under section twenty point oh four, allowed signs, number six, where it talks about flags displaying non-commercial messages, like government flag, civic flag, decorative, whatever, you just basically limit the square footage and just cut off the rest of the sentence. The rest of the sentence is no more than flag, five flags per property. No flagpole shall exceed the height and size requirements of the district in which it's located. I mean, you just take out the, the number, if you want them to have an unlimited number of non-commercial flag. I mean, there are, like I said, there are ways to do this, not just what we're proposing. So, so there, there are a couple of options here.
So, so that would be limit to three, five, or four flags, right? Sixty square feet.
For, for the commercial ones?
We just did sixty square feet.
Well, no, um, I think that's actually, you're, you're talking about that provision I just read? I think that's per flag. At least, that was the, let me see then.
Yeah, it says per-
Per flag, yeah, per phase. So, yeah, you could have fif, you could have five sixty-square-foot-
Where are you at on that?
That's a pa, on the, the regulations, that's on page eight.
Okay.
Yeah, page eight, number six, under twenty point oh four.
Okay. That right there kind of does what we're, I think, what we're arguing about a little bit. I mean, there, there's always going to be another situation. There's always, you know, you're not going to handle every occurrence in any ordinance that you put together.
Right, right.
So, there's always going to be some, something different that somebody wants.
Now, just, right, and just keep in mind, just, just so the commission understands that, you know, if we decide not to limit the number, if somebody decides tomorrow to go in their yard and put fifty American flags up there, you know, after we approve this, or fifty, you name the message, flags, I mean, we're, there's not going to be a lot we can have to regulate. We're not going to be all this telling them they can't do it. You know, if someone calls up, you know, one of the commissioners and says, "Well, they got so many flags here. This is a nuisance. It's ugly. It's an eyesore." All I'm going to be able to do is look at this and say, "They're allowed to do it." So, I mean, that's just, just understand that, you know, as, as we, as we move forward. I mean, if that's what you want to do, that's fine. You know, that is a way to regulate. But, uh, just so you're all aware, with, just make sure we're all going into it with our eyes open, that we understand what might happen. Not saying that that will.
There are people that don't want that, but then there are people that didn't want to sign the flag at the car wash to come down a couple of years ago either.
That's right.
And that was a two, three hundred square foot sign, you know, wouldn't be allowed to these, you know, so you're in bad shape. Nobody would. You know, there's somebody's going to abuse whatever power they're in, or somebody's going to be, feel like their rights were, were, were taken away by not being able to put twenty signs up on their property.
Well, I think our intent in the sign ordinance anyway is to get a level ground playing field that's compatible, I guess, with the cities that are surrounding us, or within Rutherford County as well. Of course, this sign ordinance is strictly for, uh, the county.
Right.
Non-incorporated areas. So, uh, what we're trying to do is, is blend or copy, so to speak, a good sign ordinance that's going to be across the board for all the different cities, as well as the county. So, that's what we're wanting to do, or that's our intent to do. I don't think our intent is to cut out the American flag. I don't-
No, no, not at all. I mean, and that was, yeah, I mean, I can, I can assure that when we were going into this, that was not a thought at all. You know, we're just want to make, whatever we do, we want to make sure is going to stand legal scrutiny.
I mean, we want these businesses tax dollars, and in order to get those, they got to advertise their business adequately, and, uh, to get people in to buy whatever product they are in selling. So, um, if we're not having a tremendous amount of trouble with flags, and we're taking care of the issue of the streamers and banners and stuff, then I suggest we move on and just incorporate this part of the ordinance, like we have it right here. And these flags, and not, not put a number on them as far as eight or ten, and get all wishy-washy there, because it, I think we're just muddying some water that we don't really need to muddy, in my opinion.
All right, so let me just make sure I understand. Under, under twenty point oh four on page eight, under the allowed signs, now this is for, these are all non, these are the non-commercial signs we're talking about here. Flags displaying non-commercial mes, non-commercial messages, excuse me, government flag, civic flags, uh, we would just take out that sentence that says, "No more than five flags per property." Is that what I understand you're saying?
Right.
Okay. Is that, is that okay with?
What do y'all think? I mean, I'm just-
What about if we leave that in there? They can always go get a variance, couldn't they? To, if they wanted eight?
Well, if, if our intent is, if, if we want to allow someone to have more flags, I would just say, "Let's change the regulation," not, not even make it an option to go to the BZI for that, because I don't want the BZI to be in a situation where they start granting things just routinely. You know, there, there'd be no real reason I could see here that somebody wants more flags, other than the fact that they want more than they're allowed. I don't know what reasoning they would have for that. You know, I don't think there'd be a good reason to grant a variance, just because they want more. So, I mean, if we want to go with a higher number, or- So, I mean, if we want to go with a higher number, or if we just want to say, at this point, we don't see any problem regulating them, we'll just kind of watch it for now, if it becomes a problem, we can come back, yeah.
We can make that number in later, this is more intrusive than we've got currently, you know.
Right, we have nothing currently, yeah, we have nothing at all.
You know, we have nothing, so this is a good, in my opinion, first step, if we want to get into the flag regulations at all, which.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if we'll get into it at all, really, about.
Well, I think our other meeting, we were, you know, a couple of the planning commission members were talking about some things that were happening in our city, that we're not controlling under our sign ordinance. So, most of these things aren't happening anyway, but it's just, while we're doing the sign ordinance from top to bottom, we're trying to get a good workable ordinance here that, as we're changing the zoning ordinance, that this all comes in at the same time.
Right, and regardless of what we pass here, um, you know, I, I do anticipate there'll probably be some tweaking whenever, as we work through the, the overall zoning ordinance, I mean, they'll, and they know we're working on this, we told them, uh, we've met with the consultant already about that, they know that this is on our plate right now, and we've told them that, we don't think they're going to have to spend a whole lot of time changing anything, but at the same time, uh, we do understand there probably had to be some tweaking done.
Once a year, at the end of the year, or the beginning of the fiscal year, whatever, I mean, we could, uh, your department could come back with a, a revision here and there, just tweaking.
Okay, yeah, and that's, yeah, we'll be, so what I'll do is, I'll, I'll strike the no more than.
Doug, before we start striking, let's, can we just regulate commercial flags?
Leave non-commercial alone.
Um.
Commercial flags would be almost identical language to signs, right?
Mm-hmm. If you, if you want to do that, and limit the size and the height and everything for commercial flags, what I would do under this one, if you're not wanting to regulate anything with non-commercial as far as their size or anything like that, I would just put, number six, flags displaying non-commercial messages, period. Not, I, I, you can leave the parentheses, government flag, civic flag, decorative flag, et cetera, period, I just end, I just end the sentence there. That way, they're allowed, and they're expressly allowed, because if you look up on, on, on page eight, the top of the page there, under S, where it says, any other sign which is not expressly allowed is prohibited, you know, if we don't allow it, then it's just not allowed, period. So, what I would recommend doing is, if, if you're not interested in doing anything other than saying that they're permitted, that you can have non-commercial flags, I would just stop the sentence after the parentheses there, and just strike the rest of it.
If, if we wanted to regulate commercial flags, in it, in essence, someone advertising their business, and, and wanted to have it under control, just like we do a sign ordinance, regulate flags, commercial flags, just like we do signs. But if someone wanted to put up a flag pole and run, wanted to run a US flag and a, and a state flag up that flag pole, it would still be permissible.
Yes.
That's what I'm in favor of.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could, you could, even with what we're proposing right now, if we just struck out the no more than five flags per sign, you could still do that.
Yeah.
You could have the three, I think, yeah, in commercial areas, you could have the three commercial flags, and then you could have the American flag, the state flag, you know, I love Canada flag, I mean, you, you name the message, yeah.
Well, the flag pole height and size requirements would fall back to other rules anyway, would not.
Right, right.
So, the only thing we're talking about now is limiting it to 60 square feet per face, basically.
Basically, at this point, if you want to change that, we can, if you want to take that out, you can, however you want to do that.
And the height goes back to the zone that you're in, whatever.
Yeah, that goes back to the other, other regulations. Some for baby steps on non-commercial.
That's, that's fine with us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, let me just make sure we're clear, flags displaying non-commercial messages, are we going to leave in the limit for 60 square feet, or are we just going to take that out?
What do, what do you think, as, as a, as a planner?
Well, as a planner, I like, um, I like having something in there that says how large it's allowed to be.
Six by 10, that's a pretty good size.
Yeah, it's a good size.
How big is the Garrison flag? Get in the biggest American flag.
The what?
There's one called the Garrison.
Most of them are that size right there.
Yeah, but there's, there's a really large one, you'll see it, there's a car leader on the way into Nashville.
Yeah.
There's a big Garrison flag that's huge, and I think it's bigger than 60 square feet. Most people are not going to fly that, but.
The one at the car wash was probably two or 300.
Yeah, it was really, really big, I remember.
There's one going over Shevville, too, I believe, on Truck Lot there, and on the corner right there, Bell Buckland, that's a great big, huge flag right there, and I think it's on, I think it's on Pat March.
My point is, there is a American flag bigger than, I believe, 60 square feet, that's, I'm just pointing out.
I'd be inclined to take this square footage out and see if it becomes a problem, and look at it, and then address it if it becomes a problem, take it out.
So, what we'll do is, we'll take out the limited to 60 square feet, no more than five flags per property, and we'll just leave that sentence in there about, no flag pole shall exceed the height and size requirements of the district in which they're located, we'll just leave that.
And that way, we're regulating commercial flags?
Well, commercial flag, that's just the non-commercial. The, uh, the, like, American flags, whatnot, the, the commercial flags are in the, um, the next section.
That way, we are regulating commercial flags, okay?
Yes, yeah, we are, we're still regulating both kinds here, yes, but, but actually, we're, we're allowing a lot more deference for the non-commercial flag than we are for commercial. Okay? Okay, moving right along, uh, let's see, I did, I did skip one on page, I guess that's one, two, I'll try to remember the number of these things from now on, I'm sorry. Uh, there was a question about the, uh, scoreboards, and advertising signage on athletic fields if oriented toward the field of play, uh, the comment was made about Christianity in Eegoville having signs that face the highway, is that saying that these signs would have to be turned around? The answer is no, legally established signs erected prior to any adopted changes are regulated as non-conforming signs, if they're legally established, they're allowed to remain, so, that, that's the answer to, to that question.
It just wouldn't be allowed anymore, though.
Any.
They're still selling panels.
Mm-hmm. Josh, do you want to handle that one?
They better sell them quick.
Not the.
Yeah, they better sell them quick.
About the schools.
What question do you specifically want me to address?
Well, the, the question was, uh, would they be allowed any, the existing panels they have at the ballfields are, of course, will be grandfathered, but any new panels?
Right.
Yeah.
All right, I can address that. The, um, the, again, at the July meeting, there was some discussion or questions about the signs that are at the ballfields now, and why in the city making, how is the city regulating those signs, and just some general discussion like that about, um, those ballfield signs. So, we looked at that question, and like a lot of these sign questions, it's, it's kind of a complicated question, actually, but as a general rule, it looks like, um, that the weight of authority would suggest that the, the schools probably are not required to comply with the sign regulation anyway. And there, I will tell you that there's not, I could not locate an AG's opinion or a case that's directly on point, meaning, I couldn't find something that's specifically addressed, is a school required to comply with a so, a sign regulation enacted by the county within which the school is operating? That's a pretty limited and defined question, and I could not find that specific question addressed, but there is a good bit of information out there, more generally, about applying zoning regulations to governmental entities. There's an AG's opinion from, it's pretty old at this point, it's 1985, but it's, it's comprehensive and it is addressing specifically the question of a, a county school having to comply with a city's, um, zoning ordinance. And after going through lots of stuff, the AG's office basically concludes that it is not, and the rationale that they use there, I think, is applicable here, and that is, basically, that counties are, um, political subdivisions of the state of Tennessee, so, as, the, the way the law looks at a county is, it's almost like it's an arm of the state. And there is a general legal proposition out there that counties and cities, um, cannot enforce their zoning regulations against the state. So, if the county is an arm of the state, reasons the AG, then the city can't enforce its zoning ordinances against the county or the, the schools, uh, being operated by the county. Now, admittedly, we're not talking about the city enforcing the signs here, we're talking about the county enforcing the signs, but I think the same basic reasoning applies because the school board isn't a creature of the county, it's created by statute, it's its own separate thing that the state of Tennessee has authorized through its, its statutes. So, in that sense, it, it is also kind of an arm of the state as well, which, if you use the same reasoning, would imply that the, that the schools probably are not bound by the local zoning regulations, and I think David's probably found that to be true over the years for the most part, um, as well. So, I say all that to say, whether or not it's grandfathered in, probably isn't, I mean, it may be, but it probably isn't, it doesn't matter either way.
But regardless of what we do, they can keep doing what they're doing.
That would be, in my opinion.
I didn't want to take a good fundraiser away from one of these booster clubs out there.
Just strike number nine, right? Strike number nine.
Well, I mean, we could, I mean, I guess there, there's always the situation where, I mean, you may have some privately owned, uh, fields, I mean, not that I can think of right now, but.
Schools, have any of those got fields that are?
Good.
They could, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't think it hurts anything by leaving it in.
I mean, municipalities wouldn't be our problem to start with, but.
Well, you know, I can think of, uh, you know, some, some training facilities that we've looked at in the past, you know, of course, one of us a basketball training facility, we looked at a baseball training facility, now, they didn't have any outdoor fields, but if they ever decided to, this could come into play.
That's true.
You know, I, I don't think it hurts anything by leaving it in here, but at the same time, if you wanted to take it out, I, I think we could live without it, too, so.
There are some county fields out there someplace, and it used to be that each little community, Milton, Halls Hill.
Land's got a community field and there's signs out there in the ballfield, you know.
So, there are those that are out there, that aren't, that aren't directly related to education at all.
And Land's, the signs are aiming inward toward the field, and so they aren't affected by this, but the ones that some of these school fields are aiming out to catch the traffic down the road.
Right. Uh, the next, uh, section dealt with interstate onsite signs. Uh, the first one had to deal with, uh, there was a comment that was made regarding, uh, the changeable copy for interstate onsite signs, uh, the comment was made that, uh, 100% of that sign area should be able to maintain changeable copy messages, uh, we were proposing 50%, but we don't have a problem with the 100%, so we went ahead and made that change. Uh, the next two deal with the sign height, uh, just as a general, uh, application of the sign height, there was a, a question about, is the sign height measured to the bottom or the top of the sign? Uh, just a quick answer to that, regulations for calculating sign height, as they're proposed, would be from the highest point of the sign face or its supporting structure, whichever is greater, so, basically, it's to the top of the sign itself, so that, it's not to the bottom of the sign, but actually includes the sign as well. Uh, the other had, the other was a concern about the 50-foot height allowance, uh, there was some, uh, we had a lot of discussion about that, and there was, uh, talk about, uh, a presentation that Mr. George Huddleston had made to the city, uh, we have Mr. Huddleston with us here today, and he does have the presentation, actually, it's loaded up and, and ready to go, uh, with that, I'll turn this over to Mr. Huddleston, if you could just, yeah, come to the podium so we can hear you over the, the mics, but.
Good morning, I'm George Huddleston, and I'm really here to talk to you more about property values and how signs affect them than anything else. Um, this is neck down from the presentation that I gave to the, to the city. Now, Steve Sandlin had already mentioned why signs, and, and this is why this particular location four years ago generated $118,000 in local taxes, so, from, from your perspective, that's all the why you probably need, this is our location at 96 and I-24. Now, I wanted to start talking about why high signs and not 50-foot signs. We have a sign in the trees right here that's 115 feet, you can't see it, but it's not a problem because you can still get on the interstate exit. I'll get later into why you need to be able to see the signs, but for right now, let's just go through this. Here, you can see the sign, the city of Murfreesboro has a fire department truck that's at 55 feet right in here, but you can't yet see it, and so here, you're at decision point as to whether or not you can get off, and if it were a 50-foot sign, you would still not see this property. And here you can see, the eye level is 55 feet, and the proposed 50-foot maximum height, the city actually went to the same 50-foot height against everything that we could show them. Um, so you can see the line is now solid, so you can no longer get off, and I didn't snap this picture at the very first moment that you saw it, but, but you can sort of get the, the message that 50-foot at that location, there have been a bunch of national studies, and they say that 40 to 60% of your business will be affected if you can't be seen from the traveled portion of the intersection, of the interstate. Now, this is coming from the Chattanooga side, same sign, same people are there, you can see that the B exit, you're getting ready to miss it because you can't see the bucket truck at all, you can see the, the top of the, the 110-foot sign. Now, you're getting to the, to the other, the A exit, and you can see that it's about time to make a decision, no firemen in sight. Here, I'm in the lane to get off, but still no firemen in sight, and it's, in other words, 50 feet at that location would have been something that we would just never have constructed because it wouldn't have benefited us enough. And then here, on the ramp, you can see the firemen. So, that just shows you the difference between 55 feet and 110 feet. We did, we went down to Warrior Drive and Highway 99, this is the dominoes that you might recognize there, and we did a test at this location, we own the property where the truck is standing, we put an orange flag at 50 feet, and then the American flag up at 100 feet, just to do some driving to see what it would do, uh, at this particular interchange. Now, this is the picture taken from 100 feet of that same boom, and you can see how clearly and open the visibility is to the traveled part of the interstate from 100 feet, and then down at 50 feet, you can see, well, you can see some on this side, but not as well, and it's, it just makes a huge difference. The bigger part, problem is that the trees right over here, you can't see it from the traveled part of the intersection when it's decision time on either side with this one. Here is traveling from Nashville towards Chattanooga, you can see the sign, but you can't really tell, and this was before they built the interchange, this was all 96 photos, so, I could have redone them for you, and I'd be glad to, if you need to. Here's traveling from Chattanooga towards Nashville, you can see the sign, but it's so far that, um, you can't even see whether you can see the orange or not. And this is the exit ramp, um, coming off from Chattanooga, you can see the American flag, but you can't see the orange flag because of grades. And here, coming from Murfreesboro, heading towards Salem, you can see the relative height of the power poles to the 100 feet, and, and everything looks, everything's relative out there with those heights. Took this picture this morning, and this is the crux of the problem, this is 8:40 approaching Broad Street, and there's federal laws that say, on this, this is called a mainline sign, and on a mainline sign, you cannot say how many miles either of these locations are from the interchange. This particular, um, BP, I, um, it's not ours, um, it's a MapCo location, it's 3.7 miles from this interchange. All of us have been someplace where we get off the interstate, and I did it for a grocery store in Virginia, and it was a five-mile round trip, been a miserable experience, and I wish I hadn't gotten off, so, you get stung a few times like that, and you just don't get off with a sign like this. If, if it were a one-exit interchange where there weren't an A and a B, there were only exit 55, the only place that you would see the mileage would be at the ramp sign, it would say, um, 2-point-whatever miles to the left for the BP station, but since it's an AB exit, federal law says you can never tell the customer on this sign, and there are no ramp signs, because it's already, it's already told the customer to get off at 55A and go, uh, the only way you can go, so, um, this is the crux of the problem of why high-rise signs need to be at all. If, in a perfect world, if you could put the mileage here, you could maybe get away from a lot of the high-rise signs, but I don't think we're going to affect. Another of the negatives with signs is light splash. The top two photos have lenses that splash out on the roads and create a lot of brightness. The bottom two photos have lights that are directed downward and don't put a lot of splash out on the roads, so, I think one of the negatives of signs is that people complain about light splash, well, that can be controlled, um, there's a lot more light splashes coming from these canopies on the top than there would be from any sign associated. Another of the issues, the, the insert is during the wintertime when the leaves are off the trees, you can see that O'Charley's really has a reader board, and you can, this is at I-24 and Highway 96 in Murfreesboro, and you can see that the Hardee's really has a reader board, but in the summertime signs, you can't see that, so it's a relative thing, if you limit height and require vegetation, you work against yourself. So, this is part of the, of the relativity problems that. So, this is part of the, of the relativity problems that there are with that. And there again, we just get back to the visual problem. So, it really gets to the, the height gets to the, do you do it or not? Everybody knows that none of us have built out at the, um, Highway ninety-nine interchange because there's new sign ordinances out there that require the height to be no more than fifty feet, and we would rather not build there. We would rather spend dollars elsewhere and, and try to market in an area that, that are elsewhere. And I had a conversation with Tommy Bragg about this when they were doing it, and I asked him just who he thought he was playing god with property values because that's what he was doing when he was letting some interchanges, and his answer was, "I feel like two commercial interchanges in the city are enough. We don't need more." Well, for somebody that has property at another interchange, that's not really fair. So, I'll answer any questions that anybody has.
You're saying a hundred and fifty feet?
Hundred and twenty feet is the current ordinance that I believe is statewide. Um, and, and I guess selfishly, I'm concerned that maybe Smyrna, if they see the county go down from a hundred and twenty to fifty, that they might want to follow. And so selfishly, I'm concerned that, that we could get into a Hilton Head-type situation.
And I... Did the city change their ordinance then from onsite interstate high-rise sign? Because it was at a hundred and twenty feet at one time.
Correct.
So, they've changed that now to fifty feet?
They changed it down to fifty feet, and they disallowed LED all in the same movement. They dis, disallowed computer messages all in the same movement.
Through that same change, they put both those in there. Okay.
They were concerned about this sign over by Starbucks that Lamar put up and all of the lawsuits involved with that.
Right.
I will say that as far as the interstate onsite sign, right now, our ordinance doesn't make any provision for them at all. Uh, basically, ground signs are, are limited, I think, twelve feet in, in, in commercial districts, as I recall, our current, recurrent regulation. We chose the fifty feet because of the fact that that was the city's regulation. Now, Mr. Huddleston, I think, is correct about Smyrna. They still have theirs at a hundred and twenty, is my understanding, unless they've changed that. I'm just not aware of it. The biggest concern that, and, and, you know, as far as the height goes, I mean, you can set that how you'd like. The biggest concern I get, we have as staff, is that the, really, the, the one place this is going to apply at this point would be the Epsom Mill Road interchange down at Buchanan, the Buchanan interchange, which is served by City Sewer. So, if you tie onto the City Sewer, you're still going to be limited in fifty, to fifty feet in height because you have to meet the city's requirements, even if we set ours to a hundred and twenty. I, I mean, it's, it's up to, it's up to you. I mean, I don't necessarily have a, you know, just a, a, a fundamental problem with a higher sign. We were just trying to be consistent with what the city had.
Well, through the, through the years, uh, me and Mr. Huddleston has probably agreed to disagree on some things, but I agree with him here on this. I mean, it's, the hundred and twenty-foot, uh, height, I think, uh, really works for onsite interstate high-rise signs. That's the only time you have these type signs, and, and this is the radius that you can put an onsite interstate high-rise sign on. So, and, and that's, that's why you have ordinances to regulate in different areas. And so, in these areas or in this radius of the two-thousand-foot radius of the, of the interchange, that's where you need a sign of that height. Uh, Broad Street, no. You know, uh, Memorial, no. You know, I'm talking about within the, the driving distance, like he's explained, you know, going down the interstate. Um, that's where you need those type signs, and so I agree. I think we need to leave it at a hundred and twenty feet at that point.
Then we'll go ahead and, and we'll make that change. Like I said, we didn't have anything, and I, when we first proposed this, there was, uh, some statement that, well, why are you limiting the height? You know, why are you reducing the height? I'm like, well, actually, right now, the highest thing we're allowed is thirty-five feet, so we're actually going higher than that, but that's, uh...
I think in your regular commercial, um, O'Fort Parkway, you know, out of this radius and your Broad Street stuff like that, of course, we're talking intercity now. We're, this, this ordinance is for the county.
Right.
So, but I think, uh, for the county purposes, uh, you keep that regular thirty-five-foot height maximum. Uh, but in this type radius situation, which is your Buchanan situation right there, a hundred and twenty feet, I think is, uh, is reasonable.
Okay. We'll go ahead and make that change.
And you've got somebody across the street already loves, already has that height.
Height, that big one.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, moving along, uh, we're getting, getting fairly close to the end here. A, a lot of the, uh, the, the remaining comments that we addressed in this memo had to deal with the, uh, billboards, off-premise signs. Uh, most of the discussion that we had really had to do with the number that was allowed, uh, you know, whether there's one per lot, uh, if they're allowed every thousand feet, however that, that's to be proposed. Uh, our response is in an attempt to avoid the, the proliferation of off, off-site signs. Uh, we feel that what we were proposing was, was appropriate. Uh, this really isn't a whole lot different, the, the one-per-lot maximum than what we already had. Really, uh, it says that this is currently the requirement with the exception of two sign faces currently allowed as opposed to the proposed regulation that allows one side face per direction. The other, the current regulation doesn't necessarily say which direction you have to have them. It just says you're allowed two sign faces. You could have them back to back, but this was just saying you could have one per direction. Uh, our biggest concern with the, uh, with, with this, and, and, you know, I've, I've had a couple of conversations and email correspondence with Mr. Wright regarding this. But, um, the, the, the most important thing to remember here, excuse me, is that the property has to be zoned commercial or industrial for this. And staff's concern is that I don't want to see, and we don't want to see large swaths, swass, excuse me, of, of land along an interstate zoned for commercial or industrial purposes just for a sign. You know, from a planning standpoint, I have some concerns with that. Uh, so, I, I don't have any particular, you know, if, if you would rather go with a thousand-foot interval as opposed to one per lot, uh, you know, I don't necessarily have any issue with that. You know, I know the argument's been made, well, somebody has a lot of frontage or, you know, theoretically has a lot of frontage along I-24, you know, but we're penalizing them. Uh, quite frankly, there's not that many properties along I-24 that have that much frontage, but at the same time, you know, I, I don't have any particular issue with that. Just, I'll, I'll, I'll put it out there for your discussion.
What's the state requirements?
Thousand feet.
Thousand feet.
Thousand feet.
That's what I'd rather go with, a thousand feet.
I think we need to stick with the state on this issue right here on the billboards and...
Not people that's going to get creative. They're going to be out there breaking that lot up and putting one lot in their wife's name and one wife and lot in their son's name or something to get passed anyway, so a thousand foot's a state requirement and...
And the state is not, um, the zoning there for commercial is not in effect neither. It can be in a field, residential, farmland, whatever, right?
It has to be zoned commercial and industrial.
Mm-hmm.
The property does?
Yes.
On a billboard now?
On a billboard.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
And that's, I mean, that's in our regulation now, so you just can't have it in residential areas. So, I mean, as far as...
So, the farmland billboards are gone?
Correct.
I mean, they existed and grandfathered in, so new ones coming up, you cannot...
Has to be zoned commercial and industrial.
That's what cut them off then.
And is supposed to have an active commercial or industrial business?
Come on up to the, to the thing here so we can...
Mr. Sandlin, it's, it's supposed to be an active commercial or industrial used land as well. In other words, I can't go out there and ask you guys to zone it commercial just to put a sign on it. Now, there is a, I do not know the ordinance, but it's like you can then go one thousand feet from that commercial and still have it on farmland. I believe that's what the law is, but you, you've got to have existing commercial in some way.
Pretty good revenue stream for farmers to have a billboard out there in their cornfield.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
The sign itself would bring the income to make it commercial, wouldn't it?
Exactly.
Well, we'll go ahead and make that, make that change in there. Um, let me see. There was some concerns as well about, uh, limiting the off-site signs to Interstate, Interstate twenty-four. Uh, basically, our response to that is in anticipation of our comprehensive plan being completed, you know. Right now, I, I'd just assume wait before we start looking at eight forty, uh, as, as, as opening that up. Uh, there was also some concerns regarding, uh, there are, in the county, in, in various places, some small signs like showing churches, you know. They're, they're not temporary signs, they're more permanent directional signs. Uh, they would be considered off-site signs. Now, if they were legally established, they'd be allowed to continue as non-conforming, you know, grandfathered signs. Why they're out there, I, I really can't comment on, on that. I mean, most of those were, have been in existence probably longer than, than most of us have been around. But, uh, but, but anyway, those would be considered off-site signs, even those small church signs that are like two miles down the road that say, you know, XX Church, you know, two miles this way. So, those would be considered to be off-site signs.
Go ahead, Mr. Sandlin.
Uh, I am a little concerned because there, I don't know how long Champion Run's golf course has been open, but between here and Eagleville, they have two, maybe three signs addressing, uh, showing people their direction to the golf course. There is a car repair business on Highway ninety-nine coming from Franklin, like CBL or something, but, uh, leading to their business down there. So, uh, I can understand the ones that are there that may be being grandfathered in, but I do think we need to consider that if those are off-site signs, what would prevent someone else from building an off-site sign? So, either you either got to allow it or not allow it, and that's what I'm saying, is I think you really need to reconsider that. If you even put a size restriction in, I don't see the need for a fourteen-by-forty-eight billboard on Highway two-thirty-one coming from Shelbyville. But right now, I've got about three clients that would love to get a billboard coming from Shelbyville, but the way the ordinance is written, we can't have one erected. Unless I put it on the school property at Christiana, which would then be exempt, and then make money for the school board.
What do you think?
Well, I, I understand his concerns. I think that's, that's a larger issue than we can probably deal with here, quite frankly. Um, we'd really want to look into that before coming up with regulations about off-site signs and how, how, where they can be, how large they can be. Uh, for, I, I mean, I think that's more than what we can handle in this environment. I mean, that, that's something that we would want to maybe come back with in the future. At this point, we're not really, the regulation currently doesn't allow them, so we're not really changing that, so... Again, I understand where he's coming from, but at this point, that this, I, I can't give you a recommendation here. My recommendation at this point would be just continue on the way we're doing, and if that's something we want to look into, we can, so...
I don't know of a sign ordinance that allows off-site signs, period.
No.
So...
Didn't Champions Run come in here a couple of years ago and, and ask for that sign?
They may have. It may have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'd, I'd have to look at the, the file for that.
Remember that, Craig?
I don't, I don't remember what came in.
It may, if it, doing anywhere, it probably went to the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's probably what it did. Uh, just a couple more real quick. Um, we already talked about the thousand feet between signs. Uh, this thousand-foot separation, there was a question as to how that was measured, if it was sign to sign, property line to property line, how we measured that. The intent was to measure it from the closest point of the sign or sign structure to another sign, sign structure. Uh, we clarified that because it didn't really say that, and you could see that on that very last page there that, uh, we clarified that by saying, "as measured from the closest point of each sign or sign structure," so that there's no, no confusion there. That's pretty much, well, I'm sorry. Uh, there was some...
Under temporary signage?
Yeah, temporary signage, yeah, on the very la, at the back of the last page, I'm sorry. There was some discussion about directional signage, and, uh, I'm going to go into that just a, a little bit more. Uh, the, the big question that came up, there were just a couple, you know, if, the, the question was, does this mean that, uh, four different events can have one sign? Or does it mean only an event can have one sign? This is in relation to the, um, how many signs you can have per intersection and who enforces that. Uh, the answer that I put there, up to four signs are permitted per intersection, but each event can only have one sign. Therefore, you could not have multiple signs for any specific event at any one intersection. And enforcement of this would be through our zoning enforcement office as, as it currently is. Uh, the other question was, are permits required for temporary signs? And the response was no. Uh, Section twenty-point-oh-four lists temporary signs as signs that are allowed without permit. Now, going, just talking about directional signage in general, uh, I gave a presentation to a, a group of, I believe it was auctioneers, is that, is that right? Yeah, with, uh, Mr. Sandlin a few weeks ago. Uh, and the, uh, they, they looked over what we were proposing as far as the temporary signage and, and looking at it specifically in relates to off, um, auction signs and that kind of thing. What we ended up doing, and the copy on your table reflects this, rather than, um, basically, we would consider those all temporary directional signs. The, the, the concerns that were really brought up had to deal with the size, making sure that we allowed an adequate size for those auction signs, which are typically about sixteen square feet, and then their location. Uh, what we ended up doing, and this is on page thirteen under C, directional signage, uh, we eliminated the first, uh, number one temporary directional sign as not exceeding two square feet in size. And basically, what we're going to do is allow them based on what's permitted in their zone. Like, when you go back to the temporary signage under residential and commercial areas, A and B under twenty-point-oh-five, they'd be regulated under the residential area or the commercial area, depending on, on where they are. So, that's how we would, we'd do that. Now, we did still say that, uh, no more than five signs shall be allowed per event. We did take off the, um, the two-road mile provision that was in there. There seemed to be, there were some concerns, as I recall, Mr. Sandlin, that, uh, there were some concerns about, uh, if it was a piece of property that was located way out in the county somewhere, two road miles may still not be enough to adequately advertise that.
Right.
So, if we keep the, a number of signs allowed temporarily to five, I don't think that's really going to be a, maybe a problem. And then we kept, uh, pretty much everything else the same as far as the directional signs per intersection. But, uh, basically, how we would do this is that somebody wanted to put up a, like a yard sale sign, like, uh, the discussion was, uh, the neighbor down the street was having a yard sale and wanted to put up a, um, a, a, a small yard sale sign, directional sign pointing down the street at the main road, that would just fall under the residential area temporary signage. They could do that until the yard sale was completed. They could take it out, and, and that would be that. No permit would be required for any of that. This would also fall under the auction signs where they could put ahead, you know, on private property. Now, we did specify that they're not allowed in the right of way. We made that specifically clear. That if they want to put up an auction sign on someone's property, then they allow them to do that as long as they met the setback requirements and the square footage allowances that are allowed in residential or commercial areas, that they could still do that. Um, we, I think that was, uh, I think this takes care of the concerns that, uh, that that group had, and that, that some of the concerns that were brought about the public hearing had as well. I think this takes care of that, so...
Steve, does that take care of auction sign?
Yes, sir. It does, and I think it'd be a little bit easier on the enforcement too of it, so...
That's pretty much everything.
Yes, sir.
There's more. Come, Mike, if you'd come up to the, yeah.
I've got a few quick notes here I've been making. I'm Mike Scott with Signs by Scott in Murfreesboro. Been in business about thirty-eight years, and I've traveled a lot of places to take care of signs, all the way from South Carolina to Houston, Texas, to Michigan, to Florida, so I've dealt with a lot of different sign ordinances. And I think the biggest problem that people make is some of the things that were brought up here this evening, that you really need to keep them simple. The more you add to them, the longer it goes on, you're going to end up with a sign ordinance that thick that nobody can understand. So, try hard to keep it simple, and sign people can help you keep it simple. I talked to Tom Reed, Murfreesboro's retired city attorney, at one time, when he was just coming up every week with more and more sign on its issues. And I sat down and talked to him, and I asked him what he's trying to do, and he said, "Well, I'm trying to write a s, sign on this for every sign that exists, so, you know, you don't have to do this anymore." And I said, "Tom, there's not enough paper in the world, and there never will be, to do this." So, he finally understood that. Um, you guys spoke about abandoned signs. I think you need to talk about abandoned signs, just the faces only, the message. Uh, if, if, uh, somebody's went out of business, or they're moving and somebody else is moving in, uh, that message needs to come down. But the frame and the pole needs to stay and not be considered abandoned sign, which it really isn't. But I've seen some, uh, cities get into that, that the whole thing needs to come down. And that's crazy because you have to build it back. Uh, Murfreesboro done something that really, uh, affected a lot of people, and I don't want to ever see you guys get into this. Uh, they decided to come up with like-the-flag issue. You're saying, "Let's put it on hold. It's not important right now. When it comes up, then we'll deal with it." That's fine. But Murfreesboro slammed a moratorium on a couple of things, and then it went longer and longer and longer and longer to the point that businesses were moving across town and couldn't even put signs up because there were moratoriums on them. Please don't ever get into that situation. Uh, LED signs, the, the county cities or whatever that don't like LED signs, they're constantly harping, "It's a safety factor. It's a safety factor." Well, it isn't, and the study that the government is doing is going to end up proving this, which is due to come out at any time. But if you look around other cities that have had LED signs forever, they don't say, "Guys, we're backing up because we're having a safety is, safety issue here." They don't have any safety issues. Murfreesboro, I mean, Smyrna has LED signs. You don't see tons of them down there. You don't see safety issues. At one time, I even talked to the police chief in Las Vegas, and I talked to him for about an hour on the phone one day about safety issues of signs in Las Vegas. That's Sign City, and he said they weren't an issue there at all, none whatsoever. I agree with the no mo, no full motion... I agree with the no full-motion video screens. I think that would really distract drivers and people and want people to sit on the side of the road and watch the whole video. I think you would really, in my opinion, personal opinion, be advised to take the flag issue out of the sign ordinance. Just take it completely out, make it separate, put it in someplace else. The sign ordinance is confused enough without having that in there, in my personal opinion. I've heard several things said at the city level, at other cities, and here again this evening, it says, "Well, the intent of our ordinance is this. This is not good." I was with Murfreesboro Sign Ordinance when it was first written, and now, almost all of those people are gone. And we have people who are reading the ordinance as it reads, and I'm telling them time after time, "That wasn't the intent when that was put in place. You can go back and look at the records." But that just leaves a whole can of worms open that you really shouldn't do. You ought to close the door on some of these things so there's no intent there, so somebody fifty years from now can pick that ordinance up and read it and know what you intended. The BZA, I think the BZA should be open for a flag issue. And the reason I say that is Mr. Wright's involved in an organization that just put up fifteen-hundred flags in Murfreesboro on one piece of property, and they had to go get the ordinance changed. They had to do all this in thirty days. And I think there's things, exceptions that come up to these rules. So, I think if you had an opening for the BZA flag issue for people to go there, just in case something was there, it'd be great. Otherwise, it wouldn't. And I agree wholeheartedly with the one-hundred-and-twenty-foot interstate signs. I do not build interstate signs. I don't want to build interstate signs. But as a citizen driving down the road, going wherever, I appreciate the bigger signs that I can see so I can get off and get gas, get food, or whatever I need. I appreciate that fact. I've been in areas where they don't allow high-rise interstate signs, thirty feet, fifty feet or less, and I don't appreciate those states and cities that do that, because it really makes it a hard issue for me to get things done as I'm traveling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Doug.
I mean, some of the comments he made, like as far, and I agree with him, as far as the intent is concerned, those areas that we identified, I mean, we talked about some of them today, where there was some debate as to what the intent was, we clarified to make sure that it was clear what we were trying to talk about. There were about three or four different instances where that had come up, where we clarified the regulation, because he's right. You know, when we're all gone and not here anymore, someone looks at this ordinance ten, twenty years down the road, and they're just reading it as it says, they have no idea what we were trying to mean at that time. But I think we clarified those issues. We took care of the one-hundred-and-twenty-foot, the one-hundred-and-twenty-feet-height issue. We could debate all day regarding the safety of digital LED signs. We are proposing to allow limited use of them. This is something I think that we need to kind of work our way into slowly, myself. Again, I think there is some room for compromise as far as the five-minute difference, if we want to take that down, even to what, you know, Dr. Kelly suggested as a possibility. You know, I understand his comments regarding Las Vegas. Of course, you know, Las Vegas, there's so many of those signs, in my opinion, they almost overwhelm you, and you just don't notice them. When you start seeing this type of technology in an area that doesn't have that type of technology a lot, you know, I think that does raise concerns. Now, that study that he was talking about has not been released yet, as he said, it is forthcoming, and we'll just see what it says when it comes out. Trying to think what else...
The abandoned dilapidated signs. I mean, I don't know what the city's doing, but there's a few out there right now that's still advertising something that's no longer in business, but the sign is still there. At one time, they were bagging those signs or taking the face out and changing the face to a clear face and leaving the pole and sign structure, because it is an expensive adventure. You know, that probably that person that was in business is no longer in business, can't afford to take it out anyway. So, the abandoned and dilapidated signs, I understand dilapidated must, you know, they got to remove those, but the abandoned part, I don't know how we can work with that besides, you know, notifying maybe the property owner or something of covering that or taking the faces out of that business that is no longer there and it's being advertised. You know, so I believe we can work with them that way on abandoned signs. I don't know what the lingo we need to put in there on that, but that the faces need to be removed or changed to where it's not advertising anything. So, of those businesses that have gone out, I think I'd take care of what he was talking about on that, abandoned part.
Mr. Wright.
What about the changeable copy signs? We touched on the recommendations from Dr. Kelly, the eight seconds on time and temperature and thirty seconds on other messages. Is that what we're going to go with? I mean, we...
That's, I'm looking for direction from you.
Thirty seconds is a long time. Nobody's going to sit there in the car and wait thirty seconds for the next one. It's not like it's changing every five seconds. Now, I think that's a pretty good compromise to the four or five minutes we had originally.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the guy at the seminar had eight to thirty, right?
Eight to thirty seconds, yeah. Eight for time and temperature, and I think thirty for everything else is what they said.
What we'll go with then?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Wright did come in.
Mr. Lynch, Don Wright, thirty-six forty-three Meadowwood Drive. I own a company called Billboard Consultants. We do not own any billboards. We help people find them. Address a few issues. Mr. Sandlin, on the abandoned signs, it is my understanding the city of Murfreesboro has kind of backed off on that, and the reason is, there were so many businesses closing, they ended up with empty cabinets around town or the blank cabinets, and it was creating an eyesore in the reverse. The other issue was, and I may be wrong, but the Clarion Hotel took down the existing sign, I think was a Holiday Inn, and went to put the new sign back up. Because they removed the cabinet, the sign became non-conforming, and they could only build back to the fifty-foot height. And that is why you go by now, and you will see the empty cabinet up there, because they're like, "Well, we're not going to take it down. Why spend the money to take the pole and the cabinet down and then put up a sign that no one's going to be able to see from the interstate?" So, the abandoned sign is a tough issue because you don't want a business still having signs there to advertise, but at the same time, if you start, end up with businesses that are empty, you end up with a lot of empty signs, which then looks like the economy's bad. So, what do you do there? So, that is an issue that creates it. But once, if you take it down and you have an ordinance that then says, "New signs have to be this," then they will have to abide by the new ordinance, not rebuild the existing sign that was already there. The time change issue, I'd really like for us to watch for that on the changeable signs. Mr. Demossi pulls out that regulations of five minutes on all. I guess my question is, where are those municipalities? Are we looking at Hilton Head? Or are we looking at Laverne and Smyrna and Shelbyville and Lebanon and those kind of places? Lebanon, I do not think has one because there's a sign up there across from the Hollywood Video or Staples, but it's, it seemed like it's just constantly flashing, and I don't want to see that, I'll admit. The auction sign, sorry, Mr. Sandlin, I got to ask, is, do the auction signs, considered as temporary signs, have to have permits?
No.
So, you're regulating them to five, but no one's counting?
Well, that, I mean, I guess the answer to your question is, yes, that's correct. Now, at the same time, this gives us a vehicle to go out there and say, "Okay, if we notice that there's several of a particular type, this gives us a vehicle if it becomes problematic." Now, of course, we can't be everywhere at the same time, but at least if somebody's abusing it, we have something we can go back on.
Okay. I've seen auction signs for Christiana in Walter Hill, and that's obviously more than two miles, but then you're like, "How do you regulate if you don't have some kind of permits?" And that becomes a nightmare for planning and codes, I know, so think of that. On the flag signs, thank you for addressing the issue. Josh, I guess my question is, was that the Supreme Court or the Tenth Circuit Court that made that ruling? Because I'd always been told it was the Tenth Circuit Court.
It depends on which ruling specifically that you're addressing, but there are two primary cases that are U.S. Supreme Court cases. One is called Metro Media Inc. versus City of San Diego, and the other one is the Central Hudson Gas and Electric Court versus Public Services Commission case. Those are both U.S. Supreme Court cases.
Okay. Well, I do know the one Ms. McGannon had used in Murfreesboro was the Tenth Circuit Court in which she then declared that the American flag was a sign. The way the law is written in Murfreesboro, you can have three flag signs per zoned lot, and they don't care what you do with those three flags. It can be the American, Tennessee, and Heritage Farms. You know, you can do those things, but you can't have more than three, which was, I mean, I guess that's fine, but it then does get into the issue of what else can be flown, so I guess a lot of it is the way that the law will be written. I will bring your attention, the car wash flag. In my opinion, the city attorney made a mistake on that. There was an issue on the size, but there really had been a safety issue with the Mapco store next door had brought forth the issue of if that sign pole fell with a flag on it, who's responsible? But instead, the city attorney came out and declared the American flag a sign. I think if she'd come out and said that that was a safety issue, there would not have been as much ruckus going on and people upset about that flag flying as large as it was. So, I think putting a restriction on the flag size is good. I do go to other cities, I do see the American flag flown, and I often wonder, "Well, how did they get away with that?" And the city of Murfreesboro can't. So, I guess it goes back to what law case you're doing. But thank you for listening on the billboard ordinance. I do think the thousand-foot using the state ordinance is good for property rights as well as the ability for a business to go out there and do. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Doug, what we need to...
Well, I guess at this point, if you're comfortable with what we've discussed, if you want to, we've already had the public hearing on this, you can make a motion to approve it, and we'll send it through to the County Commission. Now, that probably won't be till the October meeting, just to give us time to make the changes. If you want to see a draft, final draft, before you make a recommendation, we can bring it up at the next night meeting. It's kind of up to you, how you want to handle it.
What's your wishes?
Let's do that.
Final draft?
Yes, do a final draft. Make sure we're all right with everything.
Okay.
We're not in any hurry, but I believe we can still take it on next month.
Okay.